All right, we're going to call the meeting to order. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. I think the first thing that we are going to do is we are going to recognize our retirees. Dr. Costa?
I always find it awkward, which way do we face, right? I can kind of go both ways. I'm going to start at Center School with Principal Tim Lannon, if you could come up. So, Principal Lannon came to Center School 14 years ago, 15, I'm sorry, 15 years ago, and had had 22 years in the Methuen Schools where he was described by Dr. John Spina as a Methuen success story. He further detailed that Principal Lannon was a fine student, compassionate, competent teacher for grades three, four, and an effective principal. Mr. Lannon is a graduate of North Adams State College where he received his Bachelor of Science and Salem State College where he received his Masters of Education and the University of Massachusetts where he earned his Continued Advanced Graduate Study, or CAGS degree. During Principal Lannon's 15 years here, he was able to build a blue-ribbon school that was cited for achieving superior standards of academic excellence in 2014. Additionally, Principal Lannon has worked to create professional learning circles that have embraced the science of reading, data-driven decision-making, early interventions, and the whole child. I've had the pleasure of calling Mr. Lannon my colleague and friend who also shares the same birthday as I. We wish you all the best in retirement. Thank you for all of your work and service to our schools. I'm going to go to Marston School, and I know that Mrs. Jefferson is not here, but I definitely feel that I'd like to spend some time recognizing her 21 years of service to our school. So, School Secretary Julie Jefferson, who is a secretary for the Adeline C. Marston School, began her work there in January of 2003 when I was the assistant principal. She has been a welcoming face at the Marston School since that time, answering the phones, assisting families, helping students, and supporting everyone. Mrs. Jefferson has the ability to organize her work, complete her tasks in a timely manner, work with everyone, all with a smile on her face. We are also excited that she'll be able to spend more time with her growing family as she heads into retirement. Please know how much we have appreciated your 21 years of service, Mrs. Jefferson. Best wishes as you retire. Also, I'd like to recognize Sharon Tovey, who was the crossing guard, dining room monitor, and clerical support aide from also the Adeline C. Marston School. I know that she is at her other part-time job down on the beach, so I know that she's there this evening. Mrs. Tovey began her time in the cafeteria in 1998 and transitioned into her role in 1999. From 2004 to 2009, Ms. Tovey took a short hiatus to Rochester where she worked at a bank. However, she returned in 2009 and has continued to work in her role since then. I am confident that Mrs. Tovey can do anything she sets her mind on doing. She is capable, reliable, kind, and funny. To say that she has been a delight to know and work with would be an understatement. Ms. Tovey is always able to find the silver lining in all situations. She has been a huge part of the Adeline C. Marston School and District and will surely be missed. We would like to thank Mrs. Tovey for her 19 years of service to our district, and we wish her all the best as she retires. Next at the Academy, Chris Strong. Could you come up? Chris began her position in January of 2000 when she was hired by then-Principal Nancy Andrews of Center School. She has been a substitute in kindergarten, Title I, and a literacy tutor substitute. She received a letter of commendation from Mrs. Andrews in 2001 for her participation in the Teacher Aid Program sponsored by Harcourt Learning Direct. Early in her careers, around 2005, Ms. Strong joined Hampton Academy. Was it 2005? I was kind of going through the records, and it was...
It was 2002.
Okay, it was a pretty... What is very clear is Ms. Strong's commitment to her professional development as she has participated in many offerings from NEA and the Bureau of Education and Research. Ms. Strong became a Certified Para-educator and was diligent about her clock hours and recertifying. She became extremely knowledgeable about strategies that support special education students, including how the brain learns, how to motivate challenging, uninterested, and hard-to-reach learners, and inclusive classrooms. Ms. Strong has a thorough grasp of all essential aspects of her role. She is exceptionally well-organized and goes above and beyond the requirements of her position daily. To that end, she also coordinated the eighth-grade trip and our annual spelling bee. What stands out most about Chris is her ability to be an effective member of her team. She connects with her students and provides meaningful support. Best wishes, Mrs. Strong. Thank you for your 23 years of service to our district. Thank you. Sue McNichol. Sue McNichol began her career in August of 2010 as Hampton Academy's technology educator. She graduated from Juanita College with her bachelor's degree and Leslie University with her Masters of Education. Ms. McNichol formerly worked at Portsmouth High School as a web page design teacher and a technology integration specialist, and prior to that, she was a computer technology literacy teacher for the Manchester School District. What you might be interested to know is that Ms. McNichol was a representative of the United States to Japan through the Japan Fulbright Memorial Fund Teacher Program and to Costa Rica as part of the Toyota International Teacher Program. During her time, Ms. McNichol was instrumental in smartboard training, GeoGoogle teachers, computer programming, Python computer programming to teach STEM, and iPads in the classroom. Ms. McNichol has been commended for her presentations to the school board and advocating on behalf of our students and schools in support of advancing technology in our district. It was through your leadership that our district has become a cutting-edge district with Shark News, podcasts, and innovative learning opportunities for our students. Thank you, Ms. Sue McNichol, for your leadership and service to our district. And next, Kimberly Warburton. Mrs. Warburton began her career at Hampton Academy in August of 2001 as a science teacher. Prior to hire, she worked at Summersworth Middle School for 17 years as a language arts and science teacher. Mrs. Warburton is a graduate of Rhode Island College where she received a Bachelor of Science in Elementary Education and Language Arts. Her community involvement in Hampton include being a religious educator for Our Lady of Miraculous Metal Church. She was a co-leader of Girl Scouts, sports team, mother, Hampton Youth Association. She was involved with the spelling bee, young authors, drama club, student council, and the school newspaper. Mrs. Warburton has a way of nurturing students to take risks and to persevere with challenging tasks. She is patient and kind as she fosters relationship with her colleagues and students. She takes advantage of teachable moments and encourages productive work habits and organizational skills. Mrs. Warburton is a positive team member who contributes idea and energy to the school and school program. She participates in after-school extracurricular activities. It was no surprise to hear that Mrs. Warburton was nominated for Teacher of the Year, just this year, by the way, right up until the end. Just so strong. Thank you for all your years of service to education, which totals 41 years, and to Hampton community. We wish you all the best in retirement. And last, but certainly not least, is Karen Von Saint. Karen Von Saint began her career in 1984 at the Hampton Academy as a math teacher. Although she considered a position at the Lincoln Acreman School from Mr. Brian Buckley, she chose to stay at Hampton Academy when the position became available. Karen attended Dabnet S. Lancaster Community College in Clifton Forge, Virginia, and graduated with her Bachelor of Arts degree from Virginia Polytechnic Institute and the State University in Blacksburg, Virginia, where she also completed her mathematics course for state certification. She received her Master's Degree from the University of Virginia as well as her middle school development degree. She received her credential from the Commonwealth of Virginia with a mathematics endorsement and taught for one year at Clifton Middle School before coming to New Hampshire. Even then, she was described as well-liked and respected by her peers, very professional, very well-organized. In fact, they spoke that he could not remember a time that he had to discipline any of her students. She had great classroom management, and that came from Roy Putnam, principal of Clifton Middle School. He further stated that Mrs. Newcomb, at the time, is an excellent teaching candidate and would be an asset to any school system. Indeed she is, and indeed she has been. Over the course of her career in education, there have been many changes, included those that involved highly-qualified teaching status, technology changes, special education changes, accountability testing, just to name a few. Mrs. Von Saint easily adjusted to changes in the demands of this profession with ease, as evidenced by her evaluations and commendations. Mrs. Von Saint is a master teacher, a member of our community, and a valued staff member. She fosters a love of math and learning while challenging her students in this content area. Mrs. Von Saint leaves behind a lasting legacy of families that she has impacted in, again, her 40 years here, mine included. For this, we are grateful and appreciative. Best wishes to Mrs. Von Saint as she retires. We will miss all of our retirees. Congratulations to all of you. If I could get the retirees to come on up, we'd love to do a picture of those that are in attendance this evening.
Forty, you know, forty, forty years for Karen and obviously a number for Kim, like just a lot of years, so.
I know, after you've had some sleep. Thank you, everybody. I think next we're... Carry on. Next, we're going to ask if anyone is here for a public comment. Seeing none, we will revisit that at the end of the meeting. So, let's start with school board member updates. Does anybody have anything that they would like to report? Yeah, go ahead.
Just that we, Wendy and I, received notice from C. that they are willing to start negotiating a successor agreement, and they had to notify us by a certain time, and they have. So, it looks like sometime in August, we'll be putting some dates out and going from there.
Thank you.
Would I be, would we be receiving something from CESP soon?
I would, I would say so. I'm kind of looking at them, and they're shaking their head, so that would be a yes.
All right. There you go.
Does anybody else have anything? So, I will remind everybody for just a PTA update, a couple of things. When they are still looking for volunteers, we need a vice president. We need someone to help with reflections. Is that it? And membership, yes, exactly. As well as, they always need, need people to help with their various events. If you are interested in seeing the Wizards come back next year, please contact Patty Curtis, who is our new PTA president, or some of the other folks, and they are happy to help you figure that out. Last but not least, the Party on Park is on June 1st. Don't forget about that awesome event. It's going to be over at Tuck Field. They're going to have bands, they're going to have food trucks. Should be a fun night. I think that's it for updates. Okay, Mr. Lannon, would you like to come up for your presentation?
Again, thank you all for your support and for the wonderful gift. I appreciate it. Just, just a reminder that May is very, very busy. We're wrapping up what we need to do to prep for next year, still prepping for, even though I won't be here, that we're still prepping for next year. Kindergarten registrations and appointments have been going very, very well. We're up to 75 kids in kindergarten and some more inquiry phone calls that are out there, so we're trending in a very good direction. Luckily, I was a little worried at first, but it looks like we are trending in a nice direction for kindergarten enrollment. Ice cream social was a huge success. The weather was fabulous last night, so we had a wonderful turnout. The parents truly enjoy these parent nights that we have and the events that we have. We make that a priority at Center School. We have another one planned for next month with Field Day, which is another huge parent event. Just that nice culminating things that are going on at the, at the school. Other than that, you know, we're doing end-of-the-year assessments, doing what we need to do to get ready for transitions. Transition meetings will occur in the month of June, getting ready for report cards, grade three, term three report cards. Our grade two students and parents are with Mr. Sadler and Ms. Henderson this evening over at Marston School for the grade two to three information night, step-up night. The admin at Marston is planning a couple more visits to come at Center School, to visit with Center School, so we could ease that transition. So, that's coming up, and we're looking forward to that. So, we're just in transition mode and wrapping up, so much appreciation. Any questions? Thank you all. Have a great night.
So, for those who didn't hear, we are actually going to skip Mr. Sadler this evening because they are running the two to three information night over at Marston, so come on up, Mr. Hawkins.
Thank you very much. So, you have my report, and we had a wonderful trip to Washington, DC. Eighth graders all came back and had a lot of fun. We finished up our SAS testing. The math results are being looked at right now. Demonstrated success is going to be coming in on the 30th to go over that with math teachers. The ELA, I believe, will be coming out sometime in August due to the writing happening in March and it being associated with the test that they took in early May. So, we'll have to wait on those. We're preparing for the end of the year. We have our Memorial Day Assembly coming up this Friday, always a wonderful presentation. The chorus and band are going to be getting ready for their, their spring concert on the 5th and the 6th. We'll be having Field Day on the 7th, and then our eighth-grade celebration will be happening on the night of the 11th. Got a lot going on.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Hawkins?
Thank you.
Come on down, Dr. DeSylvan Napton.
Good evening. You do have my report, and I just wanted to tell you that we did have a very successful parent partnership project meeting last month, and part of that project was sending parents home with a little bag of goodies. So, we're trying to help parents understand how to better work with their kids at home. So, they got a little timer, they got these nifty little chore charts where you can just, you know, give the chores. There's a small one, there's a big one. The parents were very, very happy to leave with this little bundle of resources. And we are having our third and final parent partnership project coming up on the 29th from 6:00 to 7:30, and please join us. It's dinner and childcare provided. Let's see, so Mr. LaSard and I have been working very hard on the pre-K playground. That was something that was passed as a warrant article, and I thank the town for supporting this. It has been in the works for a little while, but we're really close to finalizing our final plans and hope to get that underway this summer. So, it'll be a nice fenced-in area for our pre-K population with some hard surfaces for easy accessibility for all people with any disability. Let's see, we are happy that we're finalizing our hiring across the district. It's been quite challenging. I'm sure that's going to be coming up later. We still do have an opening for a school psychologist, so anybody out there want to apply, it's on apple tracks. And just a reminder that I do meet with the Seacoast Cares Team every month, and that's a partnership with SAU 21. So, it's a see something, say something. If anyone has any concerns or worries about the safety of any child anywhere in SAU 21 or 90, you just go right on that website, click on it, it's anonymous. Those notices go to the principals of each building, whatever building you choose, and then we meet as a team to, to kind of keep track of these students and see if there's something differently we can do, or as a team, can we offer more wraparound services? So, I just wanted to have people be aware of that. As you may see, our numbers are quite high. Preschool's gone up almost 20% since the beginning of the school year. We haven't, not added staff. We continue to do what we need to do. We will make it to the end of the year, and we are all set for next year to do what we need to do for our kids. Programming is expanding, as you know. Over the last few years, we've had all kinds of different programming, so the Inspire Program, the ELP Program, the NAC Program. But when we add these programs, it's because we have students that need that service, and we need to provide it for them so we can keep them here at Hampton Public Schools. One more thing that was so, so awesome, oh my goodness, on Friday, we were able to, the ELP Program, the Inspire Program, and our unified basketball team, we took 32 kids to the Walter Burns Memorial Fishing Day. It was held at Swanson Pond in Greenland. It was a huge success. There were over 160 kids there from all around, all schools all around, all, it's for kids with, you know, any, any needs, anybody could go. 78 staff, 43 volunteers, over 1,000 fish in the pond, so tons of fishing. It was a whole day, and our very own Paige Branigan caught the largest fish that day in the derby. So, that was really, really exciting for her and for us. It was just a great, it was a great, great day, and they were so excited that Hampton joined them, and I, you know, I thank Dr. Costa for, you know, putting that in my inbox a couple months ago, and I just put it out there and said, anybody, should we do it? And sure enough, we had a whole bus that went, so it was an amazing, awesome day. So, great things are happening, and I thank you for your support.
Thank, thank you. Just a really quick comment. I just want to thank the Pollock family of Hampton, New Hampshire. I happened to see them as I was walking over from the SAU to Hampton Academy one day and was speaking with them, and the conversation turned into an invitation, which turned into this wonderful event. They were so excited that our schools were going to join them. I think this is something that they've helped to be a part of for many years, and so the fact that we're able to be a part of that, I just think it was a win-win for everyone. So, I really am so thrilled, and I just wanted to give a big thank you to the Pollock family. Thank you.
I just had a, had a quick comment. We often, we see these numbers right up here.
Yes.
And every once in a while, I like to point out to the public what the real numbers actually are. So, our special ed department at this point has 200 students under their care, and that is, at this point, 20.8% of the students within our SAU. So, as we look at budgets, as we look at staffing, we always have to keep that in mind.
That's a great point. Thank you for pointing that out, because you're right. It's, yep, 200 is quite, quite a number.
I have, I have a thing, by the way. It was sort of related to yours, and I could have reported it earlier, but I forgot. Another thing with the group from SAU 21, Patrice Baker, they are having a luncheon learn at the library on June 11th at 12:00 PM. It's for any families with children between the ages of zero and eight, bring a lunch, and they are, as we did at Center School, going to give out the calming boxes. So, it's, that's going to be another great event for, for these families.
Awesome. Thank you. It's true, and the needs of these students are much more significant than ever before. So, that means that our services obviously need to increase, so thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Levine?
Hello. So, a couple of things going on. Channel 8 and media, Nick has been very busy working on school-wide things happening across the district. We have numerous culminating events happening across all three schools coming up. We've got band and chorus concerts at Center and Hampton Academy. We've got Marston's Play, Celebration of Learning. Nick, right now, is working on a really cool video about the Marston STEM Project that Mrs. Stevens did with her class about accessibility and playgrounds, and the students created these 3D models, and then they printed them out. So, that's a really cool thing that's coming up for Channel 8. We're also working on trying to finalize and prepare, and prepare for our fifth grade and eighth grade end-of-the-year assemblies. We're also updating and looking at our current technology. We will be replacing Chromebooks for Hampton Academy for next year. We've also just replaced old access points at Marston School, and then the ones that we currently have will be used as backup in case we have any failures. We've also upgraded Windows devices and other things across the district, as well as continuing the work on everyday tech issues we have at all three buildings in the SAU. So, yeah, any questions? Great, thank you.
Mr. LaSard? Oh, no, never, it's okay, Mary, you can come up. We can do you out of order. It's fine. He sat far away, hoping we wouldn't notice him. He's hiding in the back.
Good evening, everybody. Happy May. First, on May 3rd, it was School Lunch Hero Day, and I just want to thank my staff because they are, just being those school lunch heroes, helping, taking care of all our kids, all, every day, first. Second, I'm excited because we received a letter the other day that we are getting an equipment grant. I applied for two months ago, so we get some, Marston School, we get two nice pieces of equipment, updated and upgraded, and I'm excited about that. We just received that news. And second, I don't know, there's a new software I was implementing this year. It's called Mosaic Back of the House. In a nutshell, it will be a cost-effective menu planning tool. So, I'm excited. So I'm excited, it took me long to get it up and running. But I think I'm good to go for next year, and we'll have it up and running. And that, that should help with costs and, you know, can't put a chicken wing, wouldn't expect a french fry. So anyway, it's a cost-effective menu planning, so I'm excited about that. And I guess the last thing I don't want to talk about, but have to, what do you want to do with lunch prices for next year and breakfast prices? So around and about, in our area, SAU 21, their breakfast is $2. That's Hampton Falls, Northampton, Portsmouth, and Exeter. $2 for breakfast. We are currently at $1.75. And lunch, we are currently at $3.35. We were talking about discussing going up to $3.45, going up 10 cents. I believe the way this works, if we come in, in the negative, we have to go up 10 cent increments. This is USDA rules. Tell me if I'm explaining it wrong, right? If you're in the black, you can stay the same lunch cost. I believe we're in the negative, so we would have to go up.
We are, but we had fund balance from SR two years ago. So if we look at that, we technically could go through next year without raising. But then if it keeps going in the same pattern that it is, then we're going to be way behind the ball. And then we'll have to put it up really high, and I don't think we want to do that.
Right. So that's where, need a vote, or talk, or think about it, or? I, I, I want to say at least 9%, we went down. It, it goes down. I was just, right, we, you know, costs, food costs.
So, Mary, run it by me one more time. What is the current price of breakfast?
$1.75.
$1.75?
Here in Hampton. Surrounding areas are $2.
In the nearby areas too.
Yes.
And what's the current price of lunch?
Our cry, our price is $2.35. I mean, $3.35, sorry, $2.35.
We did a P&amp;L tool also in the packet, and with our rates and such, and expenses, and it came to $3.85. So that, that would be the max increase that they suggest. To just give you a ballpark of where, where to land.
I'm going to put this out there for discussion, okay? I'm going to make a motion that we increase breakfast to match, what's the local?
$2.
Up from?
$1.75.
Okay, from $1.75 to $2. I'm just going to leave breakfast. And if somebody seconds it, we'll-
I'll second it.
Okay, and we'll have a discussion. What are folks thinking?
Where can you go to breakfast for $2?
Nowhere.
I mean, and, and it's a homemade chocolate chip muffin, you get a fruit, a juice, and a milk.
If it is too much, then fill out the free and reduce forms and get them in, and maybe you can get a reduction that way. If you haven't filled out the forms.
Please, you fill out the forms.
Fill out the forms.
Anybody have any comments? I think we're all not saying anything, because nobody wants to raise the lunch prices. Nobody does. You don't, we don't.
Right.
The families don't. But that's, that's where we are right now.
Can we just take care of the breakfast first?
Yes, exactly. Yep, I was, I was just random, that's all.
Mary, how much did your wages go up percentage?
Uh, we went up a lot, that's another-
5%.
5%.
5%.
So this wouldn't even cover that.
We have our labor hours. Labor costs, food costs. Chemical cost is crazy, chemical costs for those dishwashers are crazy.
Okay, so let's vote on raising breakfast from $1.75 to $2. All in favor? Post. Motion passes.
I, I would like to make a motion to raise the price of lunches to $3.50 for two years. That we won't do another raise for at least two years.
I'll second that.
Can we do that, is the question, with the USDA requirement? So we're dealing with it for this year, that's fine. If we're in the red again next year and need to increase it, does saying we're going to keep it the same for two years, do you think that's, would that be binding, I guess is what I'm asking?
No.
Go ahead, I-
I, no.
I like your idea, I just don't know if we end up-
I like that idea too.
You know what I mean?
You can, yeah, you can always move, um, to recent-
But I don't think it's 10 cents, I think it's 5 cents. So it would have to go up 5 cents if we're in, in a, in that spot.
Well, well, it seemed to me that we would be softening the blow that we're probably going to get hit with next year. They're going to mandate us to, and, and this will kind of soften that, right?
I agree.
And again, nobody likes to raise prices.
No, it's, nobody does. I definitely think that we, we need, we need everybody, even if you don't think you are free and reduced to fill it out, because it affects our Title I funds too. And I think people forget about that, that, how much that just one little piece of paper affects our funding through the state and, and everything. And they're looking at these reports and trying to decide what to do for next levels. And if we don't get that, that in, it, it does affect it. So I think it, just be mindful that we should, everybody should fill it out, it should be mandatory.
Unfortunately, you can't, we can't make it mandatory.
Well, it's part of the federal.
I read a thing, it said you, you cannot require that everyone do it.
Can you ask everyone to fill out some type of form? So that if everybody was filling it out, then maybe people would not feel as uncomfortable saying that they need the extra help.
Didn't we put, didn't we put it in the August packet for our first day?
Yes.
We did.
Yeah.
We did, just so you know.
Yes.
Yeah.
Part of the, correct me if I'm wrong, I think part of the federal guidelines were that you cannot require people to fill out the free and reduce-
I thought you could not require.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you're right.
We encourage, but we can't require.
But if we put one in everybody, every packet, then at least it's out there.
Everyone gets one, we just, we can't, I mean realistically, I don't think-
I understand.
Yeah, I don't think we could put anything in there and ask for personal information if it's not on the form.
Right.
So for clarification,
Yes.
Did we decide that that motion was, my word, lawful or not?
Binding.
It's, another board can, a not, board, present board cannot bind the future board into anything. So they could revisit it and go up.
Okay. Or down.
Or down, right, depending on how they feel.
So, do you want to amend your motion? Okay, okay. Do we have a second on that?
Yes.
You second it?
Yeah. Where can you feed a person for $24 a week, breakfast and lunch?
Yep.
You know what I mean? That's what it comes down to.
And lunch, just to, again, you get your protein, your grain, your vegetables, your fruit, and your milk. Five components you're getting for $3.25, so.
Any other comments or questions for Mary before we vote? We're voting to increase the school lunch price from $3.35 to $3.50, with the intention of it being to hold steady for two years. Everybody in favor? 5-0, all right.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome, thanks, Mary. Mr. LaSard, I can see you back there.
I don't know if I should start off with it, or should I end with it? But we have some current openings for summer applicants. It is a great time to fill out an application. Go to saun90.org, or the old-fashioned way. You can call us at 603-926-4560, and hit choice number one. Kathy is probably going to hate me tomorrow, but she would be more than happy to direct people where the applicants, applications are located. So, thank you again. We are excited about our summer projects, and I'd just like to go through the list so you would know what Keith is doing on his summer vacation. We have the SAU Security Entrance, Marston School Indoor Air Quality Program, Marston School Boiler, Center School Preschool Playground, Center School Minor Abate, uh, Asbestos Abatement, Center School New Lighting Program, and Center School Acoustical Tile Replacement Program. We're preparing for, that's, any questions on those? Thank you, okay. So then we have extended school year. We should have, we should be fully staffed. We do, we will be having a retirement in June. And the other information that I'd like to share is, last Wednesday, we attended a, a uni, reunification training in Exeter. And it was put on by the I Love You Foundation. I Love You Foundation is a very good foundation. It is founded by parents of a child that was lost in a, a school tragedy with a gunman. It has this situation. But they put their efforts into doing reunification. And we all talk about unification, and how difficult it is to actually practice one, because it, it is very involved. But I will tell you, it was an excellent training for everybody to have a greater awareness for a reunification program. Had fantastic, old-fashioned way, backup way, like with Tyconderoga pens and paper, to actually do accounting backed up with technology. So they were counting for the students was phenomenal. And we actually went through several different practices with people doing the different roles. So just so people know, that people are aware of these trainings, and that we are actively taking them. I just wanted to bring that up. Other than that, I'd just like to thank you for your support throughout the year. And if you have any questions, I'm excited to answer any of them. Again, we are looking for summer hires. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Keith. Dr. Costa?
We had a very nice donation from Yvonne Marie DeBoul for $500 that donated to our food service program. I'd like to have permission to accept it.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Thank you, and thank you to the generous donation, we appreciate that. Just a couple of things to highlight in, in my, my report. We know that the last day of school has been approved for June 12th for our students, and June 14th for all staff. On May 7th, I had the opportunity to attend the Rotary Meeting, where our oratorical winners got a chance to present their speeches. They did a phenomenal job with that. And then, of course, the Student of the Month was also recognized, so it was a wonderful evening. On May 8th, Mary Ford visited with all of our parent educators who are interested in the apprenticeship program. And we have about 14 parents that are interested in working on their bachelor's degree, master's degree, or college degrees. So it's pretty exciting to see the interest in that. We are going to have, as Dr. Lois DeSilva Napton stated, we're going to have our third parent partnership project evening on May 29th at 6 o'clock at Hampton Academy. Focus this time is on resilience, and how it looks at the various childhood stages, and working with parents on tips and strategies to support their children. Pizza dinner is provided, and childcare is available. Again, that's on May 29th. On May 30th, we're going to have our ESOL Family Night from 4:30 to 6:30 at Hampton Academy Cafeteria. Dinner and ice cream will also be provided to all of our attendees. We hope that we have a great turnout, and special thanks to Mrs. McPhee and Mrs. Katz for organizing that event. We currently have a survey that is out to our families and staff to get some feedback on things that they'd like to share with us. So we look forward to receiving those, that feedback, so that we can plan for next year. That went out in the newsletter on Friday. Our wellness team met on May 2nd. We're looking at our different district initiatives, always, obviously focusing on the health and well-being of our staff, and making sure they're taking care of themselves. Our mental health team is meeting during the release time in the next couple of weeks to look at the K-8 lessons, and ensuring that there are common through lines and continuity running through them as it relates to our message and social-emotional learning. And looking at curriculum, I was able to review all of the staff development hours for recertification, and just want to let you know that the staff did a phenomenal job recertifying, and that many, although only needed, in some cases, 75, many had hundreds of hours, which, again, a testament to our staff and how seriously they take the recertification process, and their commitment to lifelong learning. So wanted to let you know that, that we were able to do all of the recertification in a pretty swift, timely manner, so that those are in by the June 30th deadline. We have extended year program that will run this summer, Mondays through Thursdays. Bus transportation and snack is provided. I know that people, many staff, including our office, are working with the schools to ensure that we have those students enrolled. And then, of course, we continue to look at math specifically right now. And schools are looking at a pilot for K-5 next year, in terms of looking at a program to see if there might be one that might need, meet our needs. So we're, we're looking forward to sharing the information with all of you on that. Again, goal is to close any of those achievement gaps, and to ensure our students continue to make the growth and progress that we want to see them make. Right now, they're currently taking their New Hampshire SAS tests, which are the required assessments of all students in our public schools. And we're excited to get the results of those. I'm told that we won't get them until mid-June, although some of the preliminary results are in for math. Writing is being hand-scored this year, so it's going to take a little longer. But we're, we're obviously anxious to see how our students are doing with that. And last but not least, we are also going to have our students participate in our end-of-year summative assessments through our STAR assessments. Again, those are the assessments that we give in the fall, and we give in the spring. And some of our students that are in Tier 2, Tier 3 will take the winter tests, just to make sure they're making the progress that we would expect. So looking forward to seeing how, how our students do, and of course, sharing with you the data, as I know you're all interested in seeing that. So stay tuned, we'll have that for you soon.
Dr. Costa, just a quick note. I got a note that the summer program, we believe, is Tuesday through Thursday, not Monday through Thursday.
Yep, thank you, thank you, yes, thanks. Yep. Yep. Thank you.
It is essentially invitation-only.
Yep, thank you, thanks for the correction. The last thing I would want to just bring to your attention is June 11th will be a very special day. We have our 5th grade farewell assembly at 1:15 at Marston School. And then, of course, we have our final 8th grade assembly that evening at 6 o'clock at night. There are some transitional activities going on right now for our Grade 2, 3, and our Grade 5, 6. Just to put on your radar, we have the 5, 6 Information Night on May 25th at 6:00 p.m. We know the 2, 3 information is tonight. And the Step-Up Day for our incoming 3rd graders, present 2nd graders, is on June 3rd. Just to make you aware of those dates. And I think that's, that's good for what, for what's going on at this time of year. Obviously, we're involved with our exit interviews for any staff member who's not returning this year. And we're also involved with summative meetings for the leadership team, and as is our all-professional staff and support staff, looking at their end- professional staff and support staff looking at their end of year meetings just to have an opportunity to discuss their goals through our professional development program.
Is, is there an opportunity for us as a board to see any of the STAR scores?
Absolutely. Yeah.
I feel like, I'd like to see those only because they show a more immediate, give more immediate information about our students.
Absolutely. And I think what we did last year, we did it in August, if I'm remembering correctly. If memory serves me correctly, we will provide you with both. We give you both New Hampshire SAS and STAR. Yep. So, we will. So, that gives us a little bit of time because we won't probably get them until June, but it's all part of our summer retreat. We typically will give you that so that we can, as we set our goals, and I know you're on our steering committee next year, so as we set those goals for next year, if there's something we really want to hone in on, that we can do that. Yeah, but thank you. Absolutely.
What's the deal with 8th grade graduation? Back in the Dark Ages, we used to have it outside. We sat on the hillside, you sat wherever you wanted to, you brought your chairs, and you had a graduation. Somehow, we moved to a tent. I don't know when we moved to a tent, but we moved to a tent. And we had so many tickets. And you still could sit on the hill, but if you wanted a prime seat, you got a ticket. So, this year, we, then we moved it inside, right? We were at the auditorium.
We were outside. Last year, we were outside.
Yes, we were.
Yeah. So, what's great, this year, we're inside.
Do you want to, or do you want Mr.?
You want to start and I can chime in?
I do not. I just wanted to know if we want Ken to come up and talk about it.
Right. So, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, is it was eliminated from the budget for this year.
The tent.
The tent, the tent, which is about, it used to be about $3,500 to rent a tent, is now over $10,000. So, I think we've got, it, it's something that the board was feeling, that that was an area that they were thinking, maybe we could not rent the tent. So, there was, that was not in the budget. Because I know that Mariah, Ken, and I have had various conversations today. With that being said, we know that traditions die hard in Hampton, and I understand that. So, we obviously have received some feedback about the very disappointing news where families cannot attend. And so, we have a couple of options that we've been talking about, just knowing that there was a lot of disappointed families. And it's never our intention to, to disappoint our families. We want to make sure that we're listening and we're responding. And so, we, we do have a couple of options that we can do. The, the, you know, we, could we have it outside without a tent? We've, we've always, we've had a tent for as long as I can remember, truthfully, because...
I, I could, I could.
Please jump in, you probably know the history.
When I first started at Hampton Academy, it was outside. People sat on the hill. We didn't have a tent.
Okay.
The tent came around when Hampton Academy had its 200th.
That's right.
Birthday. We had a tent for that celebration and the tent stayed up. So, we had already rented it for one purpose, but we got to keep it for another. And then, after that, we, I guess, kind of had the funds to be able to get the tent each year. As you said, we're trying to cut costs and the tent seemed like one of the ways that we could cut costs. We could go back to the, you know, having it outside again. It has been done. It was beautiful. It was all, you know, everybody got a chance to be there. And can I ask, we are not using the gym because...
So, does, do you want to weigh in on it, Mr. Hawkins? I don't know, or anyone else? I know that we did have it there one year and...
The gym isn't air conditioned. It's a big piece of, it's a lot of people.
Yeah, do you want to weigh in? Does Mr. Hawkins want to weigh in?
Space without a lot.
Okay.
Great.
Ladies first.
We've been going back and forth about this. One of the biggest problems with the gym is it's really hot. There's no controlled air in there. So, putting all those people inside there, plus the sound quality is horrible. So, we're afraid people who won't be able to be in attendance, won't be able to hear anything. You can't run fans in there. There's a lot of other things. So, that's why we thought about putting it in the auditorium. One thing people should know is due to the fact that it is in the auditorium, we can live stream it on YouTube as well as Channel 8. So, anybody who would like to stay home in their air conditioning that day if it's hot can view it right from their, their couch as well. We're also going to have overflow in the gym if need be, but it's not really ideal. It's going to be, if it's a hot day, it'll be incredibly hot in there. Plus, we have a beautiful auditorium with nice seating, lighting, everything. So, we're hoping to do it there.
I think the, the biggest issue, it's a beautiful auditorium and it would be perfect for a celebration like this. The largest issue is that we have about 105, 108 8th grade students. The capacity in there is somewhere around 570. So, when we started doing the math about all the presenters and all the other people who are going to be there along with the kids, all of a sudden, the number of parents that would be able to show up, we, we figured that they would have probably about three tickets each. This is a big moment for students in SAU 90. This is the last day that they're going to be with SAU 90. So, grandparents come in, parents come in, siblings want to be there. So, it's sort of a, it's, it's a, we want everybody to be able to participate and, and watch their children, our children, as we send them off to Winnetkin High School. So, the, you know, the, the gym has its positives that it can fit more people, probably somewhere a little under 1,000 people. The auditorium is beautiful and, you know, the, not Eric.
The numbers that you're talking about?
Yep.
Does that include students sitting down in the seating area?
Yep.
Okay.
Maximum. It, it's, it's really just the maximum capacity of the auditorium. So, we have 500 seats, but the fire marshal says we can only have 576 people fit in there at any time.
So, it wouldn't matter if you were able to finagle having the students up on the stage?
On the stage.
With the speakers and all that?
We'd still be, we'd still have an issue with, it's, it's not a seating issue, it's a population issue.
But there have been discussions today about coming up with alternatives.
Yes. So, right. So, one of the things that we're looking at potentially is, if you remember, maybe three years ago, we actually had it at Winnetkin High School outside. Do you recall? We were, we had the parents in the bleachers and the kids on the field. I did reach out to the superintendent over there and she said that, you know, that's a possibility, but she would have to speak with Principal McGowan about that. So, if it was a great night, we could be outside. And then, if it was not a great night, we could be inside in the gymnasium. And at least you'd be able to get more, more parents and more grandparents, siblings that would be able to attend. But it's, 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 it's something that we should be thinking about. If this is something that's so important to families, you know, I think we have to figure out a way to work around it.
And we will.
So, I think the short answer is they're working on a plan to, to change, to, yes.
Hopefully, the plan will be known like a week before graduation?
I mean, I think Dr. Costa started making phone calls this afternoon.
I did.
So, as soon as, as soon as that gets worked out, it'll be notified.
I'm just waiting to hear, I'm just waiting to hear back from Bill McGowan. I can get on that tomorrow. Unless you have other thoughts or ideas, I'm, we're all open to good suggestions.
Well, I, I do have some thoughts. I don't think parents want to go and sit if graduation is in the auditorium. They don't want to sit down here and watch it on TV. And they don't want to sit in their homes and, and watch it on TV. That's really not what it's all about. This auditorium here is too small to accommodate what I think you need to accommodate. It just is. It's nice, but it's too small.
Yep.
I didn't know the technology used in this gym was so bad.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just because the, the logical thing to do, if you could, was to hold it outside, tent or no tent, probably no tent. If, if at about 1 o'clock or 2 o'clock, you find out that the heavens are going to open up, have it in the gym and, and get through it. That way, everybody can go. Winnetkin would be great if you can go outside, but Amber and her team are going to have to set up a lot of technology, I think, outside. And then, if the heavens open up, or it looks like they're going to, they're going to have to move everything.
Yes.
You talking about Winnetkin's gym?
No, I'm talking actually about the field. Remember the...
No, no, but I mean, if, if it couldn't be outside.
The alternative, the gym.
We would be in the gym here.
Oh, in the gym here?
Yeah.
So, that would be, yeah.
And the acoustics, if you remember that year, were not great.
I do.
By the way, at Winnetkin High School, they're, they're really tough. I was struggling with it myself.
Being out on the field was hard to hear.
Yeah, really tough.
I want to echo your comments because my first thought was if we're going to do it outside without a tent at Winnetkin and then move inside if we have to, we could do that here. And I would think that if it's raining or the weather's terrible, it's not going to be super hot out. Maybe I'm wrong to assume that, but I would think that it would become less of an issue in our gymnasium with heat if it's terrible weather where we can't be outside.
The only advantage to having it at Winnetkin is they have the bleachers. We would, we're going to have to, you know, it's six and a half dozen together. We'd have to rent chairs either way, so.
Are they going to charge us for using the field?
I did not, we didn't have that conversation. We didn't get that far. It was first, is it even available? That was my first question, right?
Okay. And then, the second question probably should be, is it going to be a charge?
Yep. Yep. And that was one of the things that, you know, I think we kind of were wondering ourselves.
Yes.
Right. Yep. Great points.
I think next on the agenda, it actually is overnight field trips. Do we need Mr. Hawkins for that? That's why I was kind of, and possibly Mrs. Wilcox? Are we, is that why?
Yeah. I, I think that we put this on the agenda only because, believe it or not, they start planning for these field trips really far in advance. They have to, right? In order to do the fundraising that's necessary. So, you know, with that being said, there are four overnight field trips at Hampton Academy. You have the environmental camp for all 6th graders and you have the Washington DC trip for all 8th graders. You have our French, for the French students, they go to Quebec for a weekend. And for our Spanish students, they go to Puerto Rico. So, I just thought it would be important to have the conversation early so that we can weigh in, you can weigh in, and we can move forward. So, I, sure, if either Mr. Hawkins or Mrs. Wilcox want to speak to it, I'm, I think you're fine with that too.
Absolutely.
And I can tell you, Washington DC was a phenomenal experience and I think the kids had a great time. It was, they said it was one of the best run because of the touring company. Bennett did a phenomenal job really keeping kids busy and making it very productive time.
And I've also heard really great feedback about the Quebec trip and the Puerto Rico trip.
Yep.
Just as, as always.
Yep.
They're amazing.
Yep.
I think one, one of the things I particularly heard was the student, talking to students because not everybody may know, but the Quebec trip is a no cellphone trip. And there is some complaints and some whining, as you may expect, from, from 7th and 8th graders. And my understanding was by the end of the trip, they were like, this is fantastic. I'm glad I didn't have my phone. I'm glad to take a break from it. So, I think it was, I don't know, did the Puerto Rico trip run the same way?
During the day, they did have their cellphones, but intermittently.
Yeah.
Only because...
Not great service necessarily.
No, it, it really had to do with what we were, we were moving around so much. We were hiking, we were, you know, zip lining, we were, you know, going to all the, a lot of different places. And so, maybe on a bus ride at, at night, I had a whole bunch of cellphones in my room and plugged them all in and learned after the first night that you have to turn all of them off because they keep getting notifications and...
Ding, ding, ding.
Yep. So, yeah.
Yeah. So, just to, just to throw that out there, I've heard great thing, great feedback about those two.
Yep.
Jenny, do you have something you'd like to say? You have a look.
I feel that the 7th, the environmental camp is important. I feel that Washington DC is important. And Quebec and Puerto Rico, they're okay. I mean, they're, they're great. You guys love them. I'm so glad. But if we have to eliminate a couple, then I would go with the Puerto Rican and the Quebec trip because it's a limited number of children, students that go there. But if we want to keep all four, we have to remember that that's going to also include finding people who want to chaperone, students, I mean, not students, faculty that wants to. It's going to be known early in the year who's supervising, who's going. And that's all going to be part of the preparation. And also, somebody's going to step forward and organize these trips. And Washington DC is not easy because you have to keep track of funding, you have to keep track of chaperones, and you have to figure out how much money you got to raise. So, all of that is something to think about when we approve these trips. So, that's just my thought.
Yeah.
To, to throw out there.
In the, in the, in our budget under stipends.
Yep.
There's actually a stipend for the environmental camp.
Yep.
And there's also a stipend for the DC trip.
Okay. How about the Puerto Rican, Puerto Rico and Quebec?
They do that out of their good graces.
Out of their good graces.
Yep. I don't believe we actually provide, does, do we provide any, any direct funding for those two trips?
No.
We do not.
No.
That is done strictly through, through the parents.
And I, I don't believe there's ever been an issue with finding chaperones to volunteer for that.
Yeah, but I mean, chaperone isn't going to be here to go.
Well, so why don't we, Nicole, why don't you come up and let's, particularly for anybody who doesn't know.
Thanks for listening. So, it's been 12 years since I've been taking the kids to Quebec City. It's been a passion trip on my part. We've had the same company, which has been phenomenal to use even during COVID. They were amazing reimbursement. I think you have to look at all four of those trips as very different. The ones with DC and, and the environmental camp are school sponsored, school funded. Our extracurricular trips is what they are. Puerto Rico and Quebec are both extracurricular in the sense where we don't ask for anything. We don't get paid to go. There's no stipend for us. There's no fundraising for it because it is extracurricular. We keep it to a minimum. The Puerto Rico trip is capped at 16. The Quebec trip is capped at 30 and that's because it's a real world experience. I think Andrea Shepherd was one of our first people to go. Dr. Costa was able to go with us. So, I think they're really two separate trips altogether. I understand that with a new Spanish teacher next year, that's a really difficult task and something to really be mindful of because I'm not sure how that's going to work out with a new teacher and a new program. The Puerto Rico trip has been going for two years and I think it's been successful. I think we've had 12 students both years ago. I've usually fluctuate between 24 and 30, depending, some years I have a waitlist. So, I think if we look at the Quebec trip in general, that is a trip that is so well oiled. I have the itinerary down. I tell the company every year, they don't even need to send a chaperone with the company because I could run the trip. I'm a liaison for Quebec because I have teachers, I have a list of teachers that want to go with me every year. I never have to ask a single person unless someone was sick or something came up. So, if there, there's no issue on the staffing piece of it. Those are my, my thoughts on the two trips. I think, I don't mean to belittle what you said about them not being important. I think those two trips are probably some of the most important experiences some of these kids are going to have in their whole life. Maybe they'll never get to Quebec, they'll never get to Puerto Rico. And it is expensive to go on these trips. We plan it so early because it's, they are expensive, so we try to get it so in September, they can start their payment, so it's not really a big hit on them. And it's manageable for families, especially with knowing fundraising for DC is important. That trip is a whole school trip. So, I think it'd be really mindful for us to try to see if we can still continue at least with the Quebec trip. I'm still here and I've been doing it for 12 years, so I feel very confident in continuing, continuing with it. If you have any questions or anything. Just a side note on the cellphone policy. I have kids beg me before we leave to go on the trip to bring it. By the time we're done with a trip, they say how amazing it is to have, not have their cellphone for three days. I tell parents, I'll share my location with them, they have my cellphone. So, it's not, it's not a, there, we're in places where we're together all the time anyway. So, and sometimes we don't have access to cellphone use anyway. So, it... So, it has been a really cool experience for these kids. Because I have to say, when I first started this, I never had a cellphone with me, even me. Now, they're a part of the kids' lives, and I think it's important to try to see how they can do without that for three days. And it's, it's a really good experience for them to try to do that, too, so.
Mr. Hawkins, do you have someone currently on your staff that has the passion and enthusiasm for Puerto Rico that you and the Spanish teacher had? Do you see somebody stepping forward right now that would be going to Puerto Rico?
I think if I put the email out, I'd be able to get back to you tomorrow with an answer.
All right. I mean, I know the new Spanish teacher coming in probably doesn't know about the Puerto Rican trip, and I know the kids had a blast going there, but we need somebody with the passion to lead it.
Well, and we should maybe consider whether it's, is it, I love travel, I love students?
Students love travel.
You know, and maybe we can look at using them for the Puerto Rico trip as well. Oh, that, oh, I thought it was planned completely independently. Okay, gotcha.
No, because of the success we had with the Quebec trip-
Yep.
They had a trip to Puerto Rico, and they did a wonderful job. I can't speak highly enough about the people that not only were with us, but the tour guides that we had while we were there, incredible, so.
So, maybe with all the staffing changes, we can look at revisiting this at an early meeting next year, September.
Well, I know they will have to get started on these things right away. But I think we have a consensus to go forward with environmental and Washington DC and the Quebec. So, I mean, I think we could approve those tonight and then await the next meeting that we have-
More information.
More information on Puerto Rico. So, I would make that motion that we approve those three tonight.
I'll second. Everybody, do we, do we need any more discussion? Anybody? All in favor?
Thank you.
All right.
And, and we'll put the Puerto Rico trip on the agenda for next board meeting?
Yep, we can do that. Thank you.
And next one is you, nursing staff?
Yes, yes. So, one of the things that we talked about, talked about this, this year with the nursing staff and with the principals is the, what LNAs can do and what they cannot do. And one of the things that is really clear, given the significant needs of our students, our LNAs really cannot do some of the things that need to be done, given the significant needs of our students. And so, we were, we were looking at the funds, and we know that we, first off, you can't always find LNAs. That's, that's been a challenge for us. So, we had one that was here at Hampton Academy that we had to move over to center, given the needs of the building. However, the, the LNA is really not supposed to do anything because they are under the license of the nurse. So, it gets really tricky. So, there was a conversation about for the price of two LNAs, it's really pretty similar, and Mariah, correct me if I'm wrong, for, for a floating nurse. And we, we were wondering if it makes sense, instead of spending the money on two LNAs that you can't always find, if we go to a floating nurse. And that's something that schools around the state and around the nation are doing, given the medical needs of our students. And so, I wanted to have this conversation tonight to see if this is something that the board would be willing to consider in light of the student needs at all three schools next year.
I would make that motion to hire an RN rather than the two LNAs.
And we have somebody that would, in mind, so we do.
I would second that for discussion, and I just have a question. So, are we going to have three RNs or two?
You have one school nurse at each building, so they are certified RNs. And then in addition to that, we would have a floating RN that would work between the three buildings. And what it also does is you can't find substitute nurses. That's the other issue that we're running into. So, when you have a nurse that's out and you can't find a substitute nurse, you are, you're juggling. And it's, we're feeling a little unsettled at times. We're, given the significant needs, we've got, you know, students with feeding tubes, we've got some significant needs that we are trying to address. And I just get nervous when we have had days where we can't find substitute nurses. So, this would help with that. It would also help with attending these overnight field trips. We talked about that. There'd be some give and take with that as well. So, there'd be, it would just give us a little more support where it's needed.
So, is this position change only, or is this actual personnel change? Do we have people in these current LNA positions at all? Okay.
And we could, in it, in it, we could decide year to year. I mean, maybe next year, we're not going to have these significant needs, but we do have some significant needs right now at Center School and at Hampton Academy that really require quite a lot of support.
Any more questions for Dr. Costa? Are you ready to vote? Okay. All in favor of essentially switching from two LNAs to one RN that will be our district kind of traveling nurse? All right, five zero.
Thank you.
Okay, this is you as well?
Yep, so, so one of the things that we've talked about, and I'm going to give you a copy, is- So, as you know, our office has been stretched very thin this year, and there's been times when I really feel like I needed to be in two places at one time. I notice, I know that Dr. De Silva Napton has felt that she, too, has been pulled in many directions as she is in charge of all the out-of-district placements. And so, we've talked about this in previous meetings, so I wanted to bring to you a draft of a job description. Just to let you know, this was a draft that came from a district that's similar in size. And what we did is we eliminated some of the things that we didn't feel we needed. But really, what we would like is somebody that could assist with special education, somebody who could help with some of the things that are listed here for you. And you can see, it is by categories. But we're looking at, you know, part-time, they would basically be here from, you know, August to June. They would not work in the summer, with the exception of the leadership retreat. And they would be there to support the needs of the SAU, myself and Dr. Lois De Silva Napton, and anything else the district office might need. It would, it would be one of those positions that could provide support to some of our new administrators. They could help with supervision and evaluation. They could help with investigations, whatever is needed. There's just been times this year where we have not had the staffing we need to really service our district the way we want to. And so, this is something that, you know, we've talked about now, and you've asked me to put together something. So, this is what, this was my first go-round at it, so. And I'm happy just to, you can, you can think about it, you can-
Okay. First of all, I would not label it assistant superintendent of schools because there's no way that we suggested having an assistant superintendent of schools.
Okay.
If we're going to do something like this and call it assistant superintendent of schools, then we had better present it to the budget committee, the budget season before we started, because people see assistant superintendent of schools and they see dollar signs.
Okay.
And I don't think it's fair to drop this on them without any warning. If you, I, my understanding was it was to be a position that was going to help special ed and also help in the office. But this is more like, you know, that they're doing the role of a superintendent, which we can decide later if we need another person to do the job of superintendent, or, you know, what, what we can do to help you. But I don't think we're going to go win too many accolades for coming up with a part-time title of assistant superintendent of schools without running it through the budget process.
Okay, so maybe I misunderstood. So, can you tell me what, what, when you asked me to come up with this? Because maybe my notes were wrong, and maybe I did misunderstand. So, what, what was the position, what did you want to call it? I guess I was, maybe I'm confused, so I apologize.
I don't, I don't think, I think Jenny's right. It's just the title.
Okay.
Can we-
Yeah.
Have a different title?
We need a different title.
But, but I think we could still go with the description.
Okay.
Yep.
But that's, that's fine. I didn't know what you wanted to call it.
That's what I think.
I will throw out that SAU 21 is hiring for a similar position, and it is the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment.
We just wanted-
I don't know if it is exactly what we're looking for, but I wonder if maybe putting it at a, at a director level might-
I still think you're still going to run into issues as to why we didn't discuss that at budget season.
Fair.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm, it's a draft, we can change it. We, in fact, I've been doing it for four years. I'm hoping that we don't have a year like this next year where we're, we're all swimming. And, but I am concerned about my office and the manpower it's taking us to get things done. I know that every single person in that office is working overtime, and we are feeling really stretched thin, I guess is the best way of saying it. So, I'm, I'm open to table this permanently. I mean, really, like I said, I've, we've done it for four years. I just feel that there are people that, myself included, that I was asked to do something this year, and I didn't have the staff to do it. And that was problematic for our district, to be completely honest with you. And, and I couldn't do it because of my role. And they said that you, that I really needed some support if I was going to be able to do some of the things that a superintendent is being asked to do.
Can, if you were to take out the education and supervision, if you would take that piece out, and, which page is that?
Evaluation and Supervision? You're on the back.
Right.
Back, okay. Oh, I see, that section.
And make it, make it more, more about instruction, curriculum, assessment.
Special education?
We just need, we just need not that title. And, and it's, it, I almost feel like it needs to be more of a human resources position with, with some of the little extra things in here that would help out.
The only issue is, is that you need to have somebody who can be certified to be an LEA, right? Because that's one of the things that we are short, you know, that we're short on. And, and Dr. De Silva Napton, I'm kind of staring at you through the crowd. I don't know if you-
I mean-
Want to weigh in on it. I don't mean to call you out, but if you recall, it was-
So, this, so this originally, the conversation originally started when we talked to Dr. De Silva Napton and said, what do you need?
Yep.
Right? We said, these numbers are going up exponentially.
Yep.
And what do you need help with? And I think you came back to us with a document, sort of a wish list, and I think it's been condensed down to be a piece of this, which I think is great.
Can it be an assistant?
Administ-
Personnel? What do you call it? Student personnel, student something?
Oh, assistant-
Student services.
Assistant, assistant director of student services?
Director. Now, would that be more palatable, do you think, to budget? I mean, it's only 20 hours. That sounds like, it sounds like a, a better title. As I said, that might be more palatable. So, maybe an assistant student services person that has the ability to do LEA.
I mean, that, yes, and LEAs, I can, I can train people, you know, to, to do that job. Sure, that would, that would work. And that is what special ed does need, that, that piece of, you know, and-
The numbers going up.
Yeah, and the out-of-district kids are, you know, I do those, I do Sacred Heart, I do, it's just, there's a lot going on. And then there's been some attorney leaves, and I've been doing that, too. So, it's, it's definitely been a challenging year, but I would just need a little bit of help in that area. And I can certainly train the right person, a certified person, to, you know, do the LEA role. I do think that, you know, Dr. Costa has a couple of other things that this can be a shared role that would, that would also work.
A dean of students? What would it be?
A dean of students, that many schools have that.
Yep.
I mean, a dean of students is a, is a perfectly good title.
Yeah.
And you just have to pare down a few of the things.
We, we absolutely can.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I would worry, how do you have an assistant superintendent who's only 20 hours a week and doesn't work over the summer, right? You know, they're just not going to be as integrated into the system as you would want that role to be.
I sort of like the assistant student services director-
Are you looking for-
Is a better title, but dean of students would work also.
Are you looking for-
Well, I think Jenny is right. We're going to have a hard time, you're on budget committee, right?
Yep.
You're going to be facing the music.
Yep.
If you needed it, why didn't you ask for it-
Yep.
Last year? And we didn't ask for it. We maybe talked about it, but we didn't ask for it. That's my first point. My second point, if you're not exceeding 20 hours a week, you are not going to do all of this.
This is a big job.
Oh, my God, you got to chop this down a lot, I think.
Yeah.
To the bare essentials-
Yep.
For what you need, because it's only 20 hours.
Yeah, and I feel certain that Lois could fill this person's 20 hours easily.
And we've already talked to the budget committee about the need for assistance in special ed. I mean, we were very open and honest with them.
So, you've laid the groundwork for it, which is, which is great.
With the numbers going up and everything else.
Yeah.
So, just a suggestion, why don't you folks see if you can pare this down-
Yep.
And we can talk about it at our next board meeting?
Yep. And, okay. And again, we've, we've managed for four years. We, we could wait until budget season. It just, it came up, we've talked about it, and so-
Well, we're going to, even if we don't do it now-
Dr. Costa-
We're going to need something for budget season anyway.
This is, you know, we are being proactive and thinking about next year. The budget season is right around the corner, so.
It is, it starts in September.
Yep.
I think the budget committee really needs to understand that things are fluid. It's, it's not-
They do, but they have a really hard time with people putting in a budget and then sneaking in extra personnel. If you said you needed it for something else, it might not be. But it's just personnel is a, is a touchy subject.
And I can't believe that we're the only department in town, though, that-
All these others.
You know, don't think you need something, and then all of a sudden, something happens, like an increase in special ed enrollment, and we do need it. We didn't, but now we do. And I'm sure that DPW and a few other places, those departments must have the same sort of problems. And I just hope that if the budget committee's listening, that you understand that it, it's a fluid, it's a fluid situation.
And unfortunately, we've never had a true budget by the school board. You can't sit here at budget meetings and say, well, I'd like this, but I won't say anything because I want to keep the budget low. We have to, I think this year, as well as, you know, we've tried, we've got to say what we need. If you need an L, you have to say it. If Lois, you need something, you got to say it. Your principals have to say it. It may be the budget was increased by a couple million, whatever, but then we talk from there. But then everybody's wants, needs are on the table, and we can obviously discuss it and hopefully get some of these things ahead of time.
So, we'll re- So we'll revisit this next meeting?
Sure, yeah.
And maybe subsequent meetings?
Sure.
Maybe budget season?
Sure, maybe all of the above.
So, so are we going on the premise, though, that we can't get something like this for September?
I don't, I don't know. We'll just, I think-
I, I'm not saying that you can't do this for September. I'm saying I think we need to tweak it a lot and revisit it at the next meeting.
Okay.
All right, we can do that.
I think that sounds great.
All right.
All right.
End of year updates.
Do we know? Sorry, end of year updates?
Just that on-
Just on May 29th is going to be our end of year barbecue, and that will be as soon as students are dismissed, so probably at 12:30 is my guess. That way it'll allow for Hampton Academy and Marston and Center. And that will take place here at Hampton Academy this year. We just asked Mary, and she thought it'd be easier to have it here. So we'd like to invite you, if you want to come as a school board, and we'll invite all of our staffs to have lunch. And at that time, we can recognize our retirees again, and we can also, we'll have that great ceremony where we give them their first contract, so it's just a nice way to do that. And they thought that would be a good time to do it.
So that'll be like 2:30?
No, 12:30.
I bet you someone the kids got up. They have a half day that day.
It's a half day, so 12:30.
You said all that. I was busy writing it down and still didn't hear you.
That's okay.
All right, I think we are ready for Mrs. Curtis.
Uh, just-
Oh, sorry.
And you might be doing this one, but we had a check for $22.60. Did we accept that yet?
Oh, the, yes, she's correct, they're correct, the-
From Tim Lannan, the Box Tops?
Box Tops. Yeah, and then we can accept one of my checks right after.
Okay.
Yes.
I had that written down.
We can just wait until we do Mariah's got a check. Yeah, yeah, yeah. You want to just do them now?
Yeah, I'll move that the $22.60, that we accept it.
And do you want to go ahead and do the, or you want to do the-
Does anybody want to second that, or?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
There we go. And then I will move that we accept the $35,871 and 50 cents from the town of Hampton, the cable money.
Yes, I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Thank you.
Sorry.
We're ready for you, Mary.
Yes, so we are just reporting on April, we're in May. We stopped all purchase orders other than little ones coming in. I'm trying to figure out our funding after adjusting the grants for special ed, all the revenue that we accepted last, last school board meeting. Keith and I are trying to get all the contracts in after all the RFPs for all the projects for the summer. Those have to go in and just trying to clean and encumber all that so that I have a really good ending number for you. This is going to take a little time. We talked about food service program with Mary and the PLN tool, you have that, so that, you know, it kind of gives you, you can look at it and give you an idea why we landed where we wanted to land. The federal grants are coming, we don't have, after this year, I think we're going to go back to the normal, maybe eight grants that we normally have, rather than the 30 I've been dealing with. They're slowly slowing down. But September is a huge month where most of them close out, so we try to gear up in June and clean it up since everybody's pretty much gone for the summer, other than Keith and I and projects that are going to go into that grant. And then we did the cable fee, so it's just trying to clean up. I did have a new member start in my office. Her name is Dani Albright. She started on Wednesday, Tuesday, Wednesday, so just training and trying to get up to date with the system and help with cleaning up the year. Busy, busy time of year.
Yeah.
Can I just ask, and this is gonna sound dumb, but 2021, '22 IDEA homeless.
Yep.
What happens to that money?
So-
You've got a balance here.
Yes, we have a balance there. So that's services, I, every month I clip away at that, and we should have it used before September.
Okay, the same for the SOR III?
Yes, the SOR III has to be finished, and that is, we moved a lot of the transportation for special ed into that grant because we were very negative in our fund balance, so we utilized special ed transportation to go in there, so that will be used up. And the other amount we had sitting in, the huge amount that we had sitting in there was supposed to go to Center, Center Schools air quality, but we couldn't get bids on that. So we transferred that money and adjusting it to Marston Schools air quality and cleaning up the air quality at Marston School. And that will be done this summer. We got RFPs on that.
And the 22, '23 IDEA?
Yep, so that's the same thing. It's mostly services that we have to finish and payroll that finishes out, because we pay eight of our paras out of that grant, so once payroll's done, that will eat up most of that.
I was just concerned mostly about how it was still, the 20, the 21, '22 IDEA was still open.
Yes, so it usually lets us have it open for two years. They have been keeping them open for three because of, because of COVID.
Okay.
I would prefer to have them one-year grants, because it's just so much easier to track and-
It just seems like it's been open a long time, and there's still money there.
Yep, nope, we, we, we can adjust those at any time, so Lois and I, Lois DK and I always look at that, and we, we spend every penny.
Okay.
Yep.
Just as long as we spend every penny.
Oh, we spend every penny.
Okay, on page six, school board legal expenses. We spent $15,771.56?
Yes, so part of that was Gilfoyle that we put in there, his contract, John Gilfoyle. And then I'd have to look at the other legal expenses, but yes. And then the, we did have extra, an extra bill this year for school board because of our ballots. We had two bills for ballots this year that wasn't expected, and some other little things that have gone in there. But I can break it down for you if you like.
That's okay. And what's this 276,197 refund, Demlin Hall?
Yes, so we did that last school board meeting.
Okay.
That was, we had a contract with them, they did an, we started to an RFP with them, and then they backed out because they didn't want to do it this summer. It took too long for us to get it through with the grant and everything else.
Okay.
And then the asbestos showed up, and they didn't want to deal with it.
We had a lot on substitute salaries, too.
Yes, I do. We've had maternity leaves this year, like 12 of them. It's very, it's been very rare, a lot of-
Have you had long-term subs for all of those?
Yep.
Yep.
Yes, and then-
One, do you remember? We couldn't film.
Right, yeah. So, yeah, substitutes have, and it's going, this is the month where it starts to get even crazier.
Anybody else have any questions for Mariah? All right. So, do we want to go ahead and do resignations and nominations? Do we, yeah, everybody good? You ready, Dr. Costa?
Yep, so you have-
You have Emily Moore's resignation in your packet, page 49.
I would move that we accept that resignation.
Second. Would just add with extreme regret.
Yeah.
Emily has been a really great, great asset.
Yep, she's pursuing her counseling degree, so she'll be taking time to do that, so we wish her all the best. She's been a wonderful third grade teacher for all of us for so many years.
Moving on to bigger and better things.
What page is that on?
49.
And then you also have on page 50, a resignation from Alexandra Mew, who's also at Marston School. She's a case manager, who has taken a position closer to her house, right in her home district.
I would move that we accept that resignation.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's vote on, we'll go ahead and do both of them at one time? Okay, do we do, oh, we, do we, do we vote on Emily? No, we did not, we moved along.
Were we doing either one of them with regret?
We should do both.
Both with regret.
We'll do both with regret.
All in favor? Okay, thank you. All right, next up is we have policies.
Nominations.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, we do have nominations.
Yep, there are two nominations.
Those are you.
Yep, we do. I'm going to start with this first one. So the first nomination before you is Sean McMahon, who will be the case manager at Hampton Academy, and you have his information in front of you. I had the pleasure of meeting him today. He brings with him a really great background and is going to assist with our more intensive students with significant special needs.
I'll make a motion to accept Mr. McMahon as a special education teacher.
I'll second. Any questions or comments?
So I, I noticed that there's years listed. I'll look, I'll just choose one there, St. Anne's Home.
We did not give him credit for that, just so you know.
Okay, can you tell me which ones you did give credit for?
Yes, I can. So if you-
I'm starting at the beginning.
Yep, no. So-
We were able to give him credit for Exeter High School, Salem High School, as well as that was for, I think that might have been it. We gave him, yeah, Salem High School, Salem Prep High School. We were not able to give him St. Anne's. I think that is 14.
What about Merrimack Special Ed?
You could, but our scale only goes up to 14 years. I mean, he is at the top of the scales. You could give him, I mean, credit for school for exceptional studies, you could give him St. Anne's School if you wanted to, but we did not. He's, he topped out at 14, even though those are private schools anyways, so we could, we didn't, it's kind of a moot point, but we, Mariah and I were looking at that pretty carefully, knowing that.
Okay. You want me to redact? You might.
Yeah, we should.
Yep.
So I make a motion to, what's the word called? Withdraw my motion.
We are going into non, we're looking to go into non-public under RSA 91-8:32A? Does that sound right? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Yeah.
Yes? Yes? Okay, all right, and we are- This is all non-public. Yeah, I know, we're on. All right. So, need to vote on our nominations?
I'll make a motion to, oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Why don't we start with Sean McMahon? I was just gonna do. I make a motion for Sean McMahon to be case manager.
Special ed case manager. Yep, at Hampton Academy, yep.
Any questions or discussion? No, all those in favor?
Thank you. And then we have, yep, Dr. Cornelius, who goes by Neil Campbell III, nomination for principal at Hampton Academy.
I'll make a motion to have Dr. Campbell, yeah, be the new principal at Hampton Academy.
Thank you.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Policies, let's see, hold on, I'm gonna sign this while we talk about it. So we have DFA, which is investment, which is review only, and that is in your packet. That is about our, our investments.
I'll second.
I would move that DFA, I didn't have my mic on.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Andrew seconded. Any questions? All those in favor? The rest are second reads.
Yeah.
Which are from a previous meeting. So, does anybody have any questions on those?
I don't. These are the ones, DFGA, crowdfunding, et cetera, et cetera. There's a whole packet of them.
Crowdfunding, which we talked about a little bit.
Zero procedures.
Yep.
I would move the D section and the E section.
Okay. So, all, all of the rest of them?
All of them.
Okay, perfect. A second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any questions from anybody? Nope, okay, all those in favor? All right, outstanding.
Thank you.
Check and check. And check. See, let's take a look at, out of the way, let's take a-
We need another public comment.
Yeah, I was just gonna do minutes. But yes, you are correct. So, we are looking first at minutes from April 9th. Does anybody have any adjustments, corrections?
I would move those.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Want abstain? Yep, so four I's and one abstention. Okay, we have non-public minutes from April 9th.
I would move those.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Do we, do we want to vote to seal those?
I'll make a motion to seal those.
Yep, they're right here, too.
Okay, gotcha. Oh, so we, we voted to seal right after we had the, okay, we just have to, gotcha. Everybody hold on just a second.
Thank you.
Okay, this is just a different date. Okay, this is May 1st. Let's finish up with April 9th.
Right. So I'm making a motion to seal those.
Yes, okay.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? And, let's see, we've got two more. We have, oh, these are the same, sorry. Okay, so we have public minutes from Wednesday, May the 1st.
I'll make a motion to accept those.
Any second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? And this is a hand carry, these are- And this is a hand carry. These are the non-public minutes from May the 1st.
I'll make a motion to- Oh, wait.
Okay. Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve those. And can I make a motion at the same time to seal them?
Sure. Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions? Waiting, Jenny's thinking. I can tell. It's okay. You just looked like you were thinking. I was waiting to make sure you didn't have a question. Okay, all those in, all those in favor? Thank you. Okay, so those are approved and sealed. See, so last but not least, let's finish out our public comment. Do we have anybody who wants to come up for a public comment? Mrs. Murphy, come on down.
Good evening, everybody. I am Amy Murphy. I am a teacher over at Marston School. I'm also vice president for, for C. I am speaking, though, as an educator tonight. I don't have my union hat on. As you know, I've been coming to these school board meetings for years and years and years, and on occasion, you'll hear from me. And these school board meetings are a great opportunity for, for you, the school board, to hear from the superintendent, from the business manager, and for all of the administrators. But you have a lot of teachers and paraprofessionals in our district. And I'm just wondering when you get to hear our voice, other than if we're asked to come forward here, right? So let me just finish, let me just finish. And I know that we have an open door. I mean, I have an open door with Lois. I go and talk to her all the time. And it's, it's great we have that. But it would be great to have something maybe on here for, not something that's necessarily planned that we're showing off to the community, but something that is, we're, we're sharing our concerns or we're sharing our things that we're doing well and exciting. And it's great to hear from the principals, but it's great to hear from the teachers, too. And I know that you do a lot of celebrations here, but I kind of mean it in a different way. I know that you were talking about an additional part-time admin position, and I get that. I know that there's been a lot going on, and hopefully with some change, we won't have as many kind of supervisory issues, and that need won't be as great. We're hearing that we have 200-plus students who are special ed, which is about 20, 20.8% of our student population. And for the last several years, I've listened to Dr. LDK get up here and say, "We have more and more kids, but our staff, we're good." But what you're not seeing is that numbers are very different than service hours, right? So you have 10 students, and one student might need three hours, and another student might need only something in math, and another one needs everything soup to nuts. So you can't compare those numbers. But what I do know is that our needs are growing tremendously. And it's not just our special ed population. We have a tremendous amount of social emotional needs that are taking a lot of time. You know our very much beloved Kelly Roy. She is, she, she works with our special ed population, and I have the very good fortune of working with her at Marston, and I did over at, at Center School. And she goes over and above, and she works with all of the kids, because she'll step in and, and help out and take over. But that means that what's happening, somebody might not be getting their service here, but you know, you're playing whack-a-mole. So while I understand you need that position there, we probably could use some more positions to support our most needy students. We really do. You were there. You lived, you were in the class, our class, the class last year, right? I mean, and the kids are great, and they're kids, right? And they come with, with so much, and we love them, warts and all, just like we hope that they love us, warts and all. But we need more people working with kids, because we don't have enough Kelly Roy's, as we all know. We also want to make sure, and this is, I know, a topic for another discussion, and I'm probably way over my three minutes, but I waited for a long time, so I get extra time. I think we just need to think about how we're taking care of our paraprofessionals, right? We only have them for a certain number of hours, so they don't get benefits or they don't get paid into retirement. Maybe that's why we can't get people here. I, I don't know. But I know that I couldn't do my job without the paraprofessionals. I couldn't. They are, they are a lifeline for us. We have an ALT program at Center School. We have an ALT program at Hampton Academy, and we are grateful for that. What about Marston? Help us, please. Help us. We need that help. Is there anything in the works? We've talked about that before. I know I've come up here and chewed on your ear about that before. I know we have another RBT coming, but we're also pulling from our very, very small paraprofessional staff. So I appreciate you listening. Like I said, this is my teacher hat. But I would imagine if you spoke to other teachers, you probably would hear a lot of the same things. But teachers are working, yeah.
What would you, can you make some recommendations, some really concrete recommendations? And you can do it like, just briefly now, and then give us some written recommendations that we can all look at. And of course, you understand that we have to try to balance, it's not that we don't want more, we do.
No, I, I understand.
Balance that with the money.
Of course.
If you can work together and give us some solid recommendations, we're all for helping you. I mean, we are.
You have to work with your administrators as well, though, and you have to be very careful. We welcome teachers. I will say that the superintendent, in every investigation and complaint, has teacher input. Correct with teacher input.
I, I agree 100%.
And I think that that's the way we work. So we would be happy to have any teacher coming at any time. We would welcome it and give us honest feedback.
Excuse, excuse me. Point of order.
Yes.
And I'm not trying to be disrespectful.
But I know.
But it's public comment. It's not public discussion. And-
Yes.
Yep.
How, how, we all love Amy, but we need, we need to-
I don't know about that.
We need to treat her the way we would treat other people in public comment, or we're setting ourselves up for-
That's bad.
A bad precedent.
Difficulties down the road.
You're 100% agree. You're absolutely right. But-
We're 100% with what you're saying. We're 100%. So come up with some ideas, Amy.
Can I ask a question of the board?
Yeah.
Do you remember back in the day when the board did round tables with the staff?
Yes.
Do you remember that? And rather than having it just be, Amy, maybe there's other people that we could empower to share their voices to, and maybe there might be an opportunity, we could think about it and how we might structure it for this, remember, we would have, we'd have dinner or we would have a snack, and there would just be some roundtable conversations. What's going well? What do we need to work on? And what are next steps? I think, you know, we've spent the last four years, you know, in COVID, recovering from COVID, and now it's, it's a new, right? It's a new day. I think that, I think it might not be a bad next step.
It'd go a long way forward.
Yep, yep. Even as we start to think about our strategic plan for next year and our goal setting. And people might feel more empowered to share. Just a thought.
Agreed.
It's been a while since we've done that.
That would be greatly appreciated, because I'm just one of many, many voices, so I appreciate that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to make a motion? All right.
Yes.
Would anybody like to second this?
Second.
All right. All those in favor? All right. I think we are done.
Thank you.